Thank you. Kathleen, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Blanco?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Carolyn Dickson?
Here. And there we go. Okay, we have, we need the approval of the Planning Commission meetings of October 2nd.
I move that we approve the minutes for the October 2nd meeting.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. These are for items not agendized. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to pontificate about the universe? No? Then we will move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved with one motion. These items are read only on request of commission members. Should anyone, including members of the public, wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered as a separate item. As my understanding, we have a recusal?
Yes, I will be recusing myself from this item.
All right. Does she need to get up and walk out for the note for the vote? All right. Having taken a look at the consent calendar, do we hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar of today's date.
Okay. A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. And we reseat Commissioner Hernandez. Okay, the public hearing. We'll start off with item number two. McDonald's Plan Development Permit at 1710 South Broadway. Can we hear it from staff?
Good evening, commissioners. We're in Hosteller Planning Manager. I would like to introduce a new member of our team, well, new-ish. Alejandra Alvarez is a new Assistant Planner for the city. Alejandra. And Alejandra has been interning with us. That's why I say new-ish. She's been with the team, interning since her graduation at Cal Poly in City and Regional Planning and applied for a position for Assistant Planner, and we're happy to have her on the team. So she's going to be presenting this project number two on the agenda tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you, Carolyn Dickson. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Alejandra Alvarez. Like Ryan mentioned, Assistant Planner, and I'll be presenting on the project for McDonald's located at 1710 South Broadway. The site is located at the corner of South Broadway, East New Love, and McClellan Street. The site is currently occupied by McDonald's, and the intent of this project is to demolish the existing building and build a new facility to have the same purpose, which is to serve as a McDonald's fast food restaurant. The site is surrounded by commercial uses such as Smart &amp; Final and the Discount Mall to the east, a dental office, restaurant, and motel to the north, enterprise car rental to the south, and multifamily residential to the west. The site itself is within the general commercial with the Plan Development Overlay District and is part of the Entrada Specific Plan. As you can see, to the east and north, you also have a general commercial Plan Development Overlay District. To the far east, you have a medium-density residential district, and to the west, you have a high-density residential district. Here you see the current site. There are two curb cuts on South Broadway with two exits and one entrance point. On East New Love Drive, there is one entrance and exit point. On McClellan Street, there are two entrances and one exit point. The existing layout has also has a one-lane drive-through that begins on the east side of the site and wraps around the entire building with the intent of exiting again on McClellan Street. The drive-through does intercept with pedestrian access to the dine-in portion of the building on the east side of the building. Current parking consists of all diagonal parking spots. ADA parking is located along South Broadway, and the landscaping along the drive-through portion contains a handful of trees, and there is more landscaping along the ADA parking along South Broadway, as well as a few trees within the parking lot. Here you see the proposed site. Though the building itself is being proposed to be rebuilt in relatively the same spot on the site, the project does include reducing the access to the site along South Broadway and McClellan Street to one on each side, and keeping the access point to the site on East New Love Drive. The new drive-through layout includes two lanes, and they converge into one, and it does not wrap around the entire building. Parking will now be provided along the south side of the building, and that area will now contain the ADA parking spots and will allow closer accessibility to the dine-in portion of the building. The landscape will be enhanced along the drive-through that borders East New Love Drive. It will also be enhanced along South Broadway, and new planters will be added throughout the parking lot. The following are pictures of the existing site. Here we have the existing building from South Broadway. One thing to know about the proposed new building, and will be shown in upcoming slides, is a change in style of the facade. It is going to be a more modern style with various materials on that. As you can see, these are the current ADA parking spots with the drive-through behind them. Here we have the drive-through looking from East New Love Drive towards South Broadway. In the proposed plan, as mentioned prior, the landscape will be enhanced. Here we are looking at the rear of the building, looking from McClellan Street. As you can see now, the drive-through window is on the left side of the building, and that is where the customer parking is being proposed. Here we have the parking lot layout. The project proposes additional landscape planters and a mix of diagonal and straight parking spots as well. Here we have elevation renderings that depict the new building's style and materials being used on the facade. The new building proposes metal panels on the top half of the building, a mixture of stucco and wood accents on the bottom half of the building. The use of these materials and colors do align with what is mentioned within the Entrada Specific Plan. If you would like a closer look at these materials, the applicant has provided those materials for you. With that, this concludes the staff presentation. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission, by motion, approve Plan Development Permit PD 2019-006. The applicant is available for further questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alejandra. Have there been any communications by the applicant to commission members? No? Okay. Do there are any questions of staff at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick question. At the drive-through, sometimes there's an extended wait. Where do people pull off to the side to wait for their food if it's not, if it's taking a little longer?
I believe that question can be better answered by the applicant.
Commissioner, I think it's the front two parking spaces that border Broadway. Probably that's it. I mean, that's probably what's going to be. Go ahead. Yeah, if you could come up to the podium, sir, and answer that question. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ed McGrady, and the address is 5674 Shiloh Court in Oregon. I'm the Director of Operations for McDonald's. And it doesn't really show it on that drawing, but there's a third window, or we would pull cars to the third window, and then if that spot is full, there's also another spot in front of the store.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions of staff? Thank you.
Yeah, well, is there an existing sign that's out there now, an existing post sign? I just don't remember if there was a post sign out front, and if that one's intended to stay, if there is one, I guess.
There is an existing sign along South Broadway. They will need signed permits to permit that there.
And we know that that's staying, or?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
No, I have a question. Will the McDonald's be closed down during the construction period?
They are completely demoing the building, so yes, it will be closed down during the rebuild of the building.
And I don't know if this is a question for the applicant. Do you have an estimate of how long that's going to take?
So, my name's Roy Priest. I'm Designator, we're the architect and engineer for the project. So, a couple of quick questions, and I'll kind of just circle through. So, Commissioner Lopez, for yours. So, there's a third window on the new construction projects that we have, and a lot of the reason behind that was to keep staff in the store to be able to bring larger orders to that third window. And then if, for some reason, they need to, there's two spots on the west side. You can see them on the front, where we can roll around the corner. It's called a roll forward, and we can park two cars there for really large orders so that staff doesn't have to cross streets or intersections or anything like that to bring you your food or your larger orders. As far as closing the store, yes, we're scraping it all the way to the ground. So, typical rebuilds on these, again, depending on utilities and everything else, tend to take about three months, depending on the contractor and how we do that. But three months is typically our close-down time, and then reopen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further questions? I have a question of staff, and probably Mr. Beas there, Don Beas. I spend an inordinate amount of time in this McDonald's every morning, unfortunately. Well, my wife would certainly kill me. She probably is watching this now. But my concern, when I was looking this over, is pushing the exit of the drive-through onto New Love. That particular, that particular corner, I mean, there's just a lot of traffic there, and then stacking up what is probably going to be left-hand turns on that from Broadway, especially you have the traffic coming across New Love from the west going, going east. I mean, there's just a lot of traffic, whereas keeping it on McClellan, it was relatively sleepy, and frankly, the vast majority of traffic was McDonald's traffic. I am, I am very concerned about the, about the amount of traffic that we're going to be pushing onto New Love so close to that corner. Have you taken a look at that at all? Has any traffic study has been done?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We did, engineers have did look at that. It's an existing driveway. The configuration for this, for this new McDonald's is a little different, so it'll be, it has the tendency for vehicles, as you just mentioned, to go out in a higher frequency at that intersection. However, there are other outlets for vehicles to exit in the event that somebody is stopped at the driveway. As we all know, and they could probably attest to this, the drive-through's, the circulation is quite, quite frequent, and ideally, it's that vehicle that's turning left that wants to go northbound on Broadway is, correct me if I'm wrong, that is, that is your concern.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, because right now, the way it's configured, there is a, there's a cement lip that curls around, so basically, nobody exits from, from that driveway. That driveway is almost exclusively, and coming in, almost nobody goes out because of the direction of the, the parking. So, it curls around, and of course, the, the drive-through is on the other side, and then it exits McClellan, and that's really the way it channels all of that, all that traffic. With this, virtually everybody, because anybody who's going to go on a Broadway is probably not going to drive all the way down here and, you know, to the southern side of that thing and then get on a Broadway. They're going to try to exit as quickly as possible. So, you're looking at almost 100% of your, your drive-through traffic going that direction.
I believe technically it's illegal for them to turn out, because there's, the striping that's situated there, because it's so close to the intersection, it's, it's illegal for the left. A solution?
How are you going to enforce that?
Right. A solution to that, while enforcement, cops may go get coffee there in the morning or what have you, but a solution to that could be the establishment, placing a sign at the driveway, right-only. I think that would be, it's, signage is helpful, and, I mean, quite frankly, if, if there is, if there are vehicles there, people will, I for one, if I'm, if I'm behind one, if I'm behind somebody, you're ahead of me, say, I'm going to, I'm going to go, depending where I'm from, if I want to go northbound on Broadway, I'm probably going, I'm not going to wait for you. I'm probably going to, I'm likely going to go through the, through the, through the parking lot, get onto Broadway, and then head north. But it'll vary. It's, but my suggestion would be to add some signage, and I don't know if the applicant is, is open to that.
And, and you know, and I'll, and I'll ask the applicant, but I'm just saying, I, I think you guys are, are just asking for a ton of trouble here, because people will generally, regardless if there's a sign there or not, turn, and then those people that are impatient, maybe they'll go to the southern area, and hopefully, they're making their way northbound, but if they're still wanting to go southbound, then they're going to scoot out and immediately cross two lanes of Broadway traffic to get to that, to get to that U-turn on, you know, on, on New Love to get back going southbound. I, I just think you're asking for problems there, but let's go ahead and ask the applicant about that.
Sure. So, a couple of things went into the site design on this one. We did look at the site and how it is, and there's a lot of kind of movement going around there, a lot of drive entrances coming in there. So, one of the first things we want to do was limit, start reducing those right now. Like, there's five access points under the site. So, basically getting it down to the three. Do understand kind of your, your idea about that one, and we looked at the idea of possibly closing that north driveway. The big reason we don't, and we really wanted to keep that, was really access to the sites if you're coming down South Broadway. A lot of people now coming down, that's the only entrance they know. They don't know the one back on McClellan. And given the number of lanes on Broadway, we felt that that was kind of a crucial entry that we have to leave there. As far as signage on it?
That's a double-edged sword, isn't it? I mean, the reason you want that there is because of all the traffic, and the reason that we don't want it there is because of all the traffic.
Because the traffic tried to leave it, which is the traffic getting in there. When it comes to signage, we're open to talking to staff about whether we can say, hey, look, this is going to be a right-only out of there. Try to limit people leaving that and trying to make that left to get to that intersection. One of the other things we did on this site design versus what's there currently is everything's, majority of it's a double lane, which it's not today. And really, what the intent is for that is just as cars are leaving, they're more likely to start using the other drive aisles on the south, just because they don't have to circle the whole site now if they back out of their spot or they leave the drive-through in order to get to one of those southern entrances. So now, with a double lane traffic both ways, they can easily get down to the southern ones and either exit out on McClellan or exit out on a Broadway going northbound. So, yeah, that north one, it's, it's kind of a double edge, but I think where we're at is the best solution for what's there compared to what's there today, and trying to make the access onto the site for customers as easy as possible. That's one of the things we try to, our new image and what we're doing is really about the customer experience, whether you're going through the drive-through or you're coming to eat in the restaurant. It's to make it as little pain as possible, and the one today is not necessarily the best version.
Yeah. Well, you know, and I, and I agree that it, I mean, it's, I think this is a good thing, that it's being remodeled and rebuilt. I mean, that, that's good, and you're going to redo the parking lot. I, I'm all for that. I, I am just very, very concerned that you're pushing traffic onto that New Love, and I, and I got to say, a couple of signs does not alleviate my, my concern substantially. Pushing, and I, I think, I mean, just from my own experience, and that's pretty substantial, I, I mean, I think it's got to be 90% of traffic right now exits onto McClellan and then, and then gets on to New Love, but at least it's further back and, you know, that sort of thing. If you're pushing so 90% of that is, is trying to scoot out, you know, on that, you know, onto New Love close to Broadway, I, boy, I just see a lot of, I see a lot of stacking problems. I also see a lot of potential accidents. I, I think, I think it's a safety issue. And I'm just, like I said, I'm just not sure that, that a couple of signs really, in my mind, do it. But anyway, we will, we'll cross that bridge down, down the road here. Yes?
In this, when you're going the two lanes through the drive-through and then you're exiting, does that continue to be two lanes, or is that landscaping taking part of, does it become one lane? So, as you're going up north?
Okay.
You make a left. Is that a one lane, or is that two lanes?
Becomes a one lane.
When you're going north in front of the store?
The two lanes that then curve around.
Does it become one lane?
On the drive-through lane itself?
Yes.
So, on the drive-through lane with the third window, the way it works, as you're, you can see the painted kind of wait here line, kind of just on the exit?
Yep.
That's a double, it's, it's one-way traffic, but it's, we call it a bypass. So, as a car's waiting at that stop line, at that third window, waiting for their order to come through, if the car behind them, their order, in theory, gets delivered first, they can pull around that car that's waiting for their food, and then they can make a left or right, depending on what they're going to do to exit that drive-through. And then the car at the third window, the window's set 10 feet back from that line, so that once they get their food, they don't just zoom out, they wait, they go forward to that limit line and then can make a left or right, again, depending on, make sure there's not another, not another car coming past them on the bypass.
Yeah, and that's where I was trying to understand whether it was going to continue to be two lanes, because the person behind maybe get, got their food, but then they still might have to wait for the person waiting at the window for a large order. Whereas the McDonald's bypassler, it goes into the drive-through, but then you're able to exit out to the right. So I don't know if that's a possibility, instead of having the landscaping there, just make an exit, but I don't know if that's feasible.
That exit right now on the north is just one lane in, one lane out, so, yeah, if we could work with staff, if it gets to that point, and you can make two lanes going out, so ones, if it goes by the bypass, they can just turn and wait. But then I think it's making almost worse, like the other commissioners talking about, Commissioner Dickson, where now you have two cars trying to make?
Right.
Turns out on New Love. So, I think at that point, we're better off keeping it the, what it is today, one in, one out, and then let the cars that are in the drive-through figure out, just, hey, I got my food, I'm going to go first, while you're waiting for yours.
Further questions of?
Mr. Chair, listening to the discussion, it's, and this is obviously something that's that, that's something that the applicant will have to consider. What if, what if we propose to, because I checked on, on the air, that it is illegal to make that movement, the left turn movement. It is illegal. So, so the movements, if they're leaving that driveway, they have to go, they have to go right.
Well, they don't, because every morning I watch it happen. I mean, I sit in that line.
And if a police officer's there, if a police officer's there and they see that movement, they're going to get a ticket. I'm just stating the fact that it is an illegal movement. We can, again, it's, it's open to the, to the applicant, is to establish the signage so that it's very clear, monitor it for a period of 12 months. In the event that, that there's any kind of accident activity, then we go to the next step as far as perhaps, and I'll go as far as maybe closing the driveway or limiting it, limiting it in a design such that it is right-out-only with a physical improvement. There you go. It's like the Starbucks on Main Street.
Well, couldn't, couldn't we basically do that before waiting to see whether or not you have horrible accidents? I mean, if we're, if we're just concerned about it, I mean, couldn't we put that as a condition?
If the applicant is open, is open to that, to a physical improvement at the?
And what do you mean by that as a physical improvement? What would?
Any concrete improvements. Right now, there's no, it's, it's just an open driveway. If you, if you designed it as such, so that it's a right-out-only, so that that's the obvious turning movement, then, then that's, that would be the improvement as such. Again, if the applicant is, is open to that, to alleviate your concern.
Does that mean putting in kind of that median, like it's there at Starbucks and Subway, where you sort of force people to go right? Although I know that that's been pretty difficult to maneuver through, their people have been hitting that forever. So, it does discourage you from going left pretty well, but it's, I think it hasn't worked maybe as well as everybody had hoped, in terms of just, it's been hit so much.
Correct. Again, I mentioned, it is illegal for that left turn movement. If we apprise the police of this, and, hey, can we monitor that, that the police, the police department is, is very good at monitoring, if, with assistance for that.
All right. Thank you. We'll probably be calling back here and just say. No worries. Let's go ahead and open this meeting to the public. Do we have any, any notification, or anybody wants to speak? Okay, then, then we will go ahead and, sir, I'm sorry, I just had you go ahead and go back up there. Any additional questions for the applicant? By commission members? No? Is there anything you would like to, any additional statements you'd like to make?
Yeah, just overall, a couple of things. One, if you have interest in any of the materials, we have some samples. Not only put them on board, but they just came in, so I can go through those if you're interested in that. And then two, just talking about the site, obviously, it's McDonald's, we've been in the city for a while. The operators, the store are very tied in with the city. They do want to invest and invest in this property. So, between what they're doing and what McDonald's as a corporation is doing is really just trying to reinvent kind of the brand from how all of us knew when we were younger, and it's come a long way to where we are. That's a lot of the vision that you see today, and the design of the building in front of you, to the site, to the food, to the service, to, and Ed can talk about that, as far as how the staff's even being trained. It'll, when this reopens, it'll be not your typical McDonald's that you've seen or been in before. So, thank the staff for getting to this point. I know Carol and Alejandra have helped us tons getting here, so thank them, and then thank you guys for tonight. Any other questions, for free, shoot them at me.
Sir, would, would you guys be willing to modify that, that exit, so then it basically forced people to, to turn right?
Yeah, I think overall, we will look at it, whatever kind of engineering and staff wants to do. Like we said, the way it is today, there's not a barrier. People are used to using it. We do understand, based on the configuration of the site, it's probably add a little more load on there, and if customers do, increase police revenue, so that's always a good thing, too. People only make the mistake once. I think overall, the site flow is better than it is today, so if that's our one sticking point, then yeah, we have, we don't have a problem trying to limit or add more signage or even add a physical barrier to start to push you right a little bit. Our big intent is just still making sure that cars can come in that. That's the reason that, why we're leaving the driveway where it is today. And I think over time, people are just going to start to know the site and know it better, and start to use the southern driveways more, and have a little easier access to get to those. I know the way it is right now, a lot of people are going out to McClellan because the drive-through dumps out there, and there's not an easy way to turn around to get back to Broadway. Now, it's going to be a lot easier when you come out of the drive-through with your food, just head south and exit onto Broadway out there and continue north.
Yeah.
Or if you're going south, they know it's going to be hard to make that turn out of there. It's going to stack up on New Love, and they're just going to get used to going back around like they always have.
And, and you know, it's your, it's your business model, but I would just, I would say this to you, as, as a customer, it is, it is, right now, going to be much easier for me to go out of McClellan, onto New Love, and then have my choice of going north or south on Broadway. With this new configuration, you are basically choosing people, they're going to have to go north on Broadway, or make that, you know, scurry across two lanes of traffic to the, to the turn to make the U-turn, or circle the? make the U-turn or circle the entire piece of property to get on McClellan to then get onto New Love and things. Your assumption that it's going to be easier, from my experience, is incorrect.
Sure.
And so, now, once again, people will get used to doing what they're doing, but it will be less convenient than the way you've got it situated now.
I understand. And then really just, again, customers, it's about your impact in the drive-through and how you use it. And not that we want to make it harder for you. Hopefully, the way the model is, the service times, there's not going to be lines. Everything moves a lot quicker for you to get out and not battling traffic in that parking lot. And one of the big things, again, which I didn't touch on necessarily, right now, that building that's there, we call it a reverse building where you kind of have to flip all operations inside. You circle the whole building around. It puts a lot of the drive-through components and everything on that kind of west side on Broadway. And again, one of the things is image. It's, this is one of the main things you see coming into Santa Maria. So we don't want you looking at a bunch of drive-through stacking and everything on the back from your Main Street on Broadway. So we're trying to just, to increase the image of McDonald's and increase kind of what it looks like coming into the city or leaving the city as you're going south. So just one other piece kind of to it. Obviously, we look at everything as a totality, but some things take a backseat, not a backseat, but are a little less imperative than the others, so.
Okay. Any further questions from the applicant? No? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for comments. No?
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I agree with you on that exit there. A physical barrier would probably be best. I don't know if it's that same type of island that's out there in front of Starbucks and over there because that's maybe, I don't know, I was asking Commissioner Blanco, those delineators that, I don't know if something like that would be possible, just keeps people from turning left. And I'm guilty of doing that same movement at Fessler and Broadway. So I do understand it, but I do applaud the applicant because it is a much better circulation on-site. So thank you for that, and if we can just take care of that, I think it's a winner. Thank you.
Mr. Blanco.
Yeah, I think, you know, addressing that concern, if it's a very straightforward change to the plan to address those potential lefts out of there, I think that's definitely worth looking into. Other than that, I think it makes a lot of, this is a huge improvement over what's out there now. I just, when I first saw the layout there, I couldn't believe that you had to wrap around the whole building to do a takeout order and then try to get over to the restaurant across that, you know, the drive-through area. So this makes a lot more sense. You know, I think that would be the one improvement that potentially, if it was amenable to everybody and it made some sense. Yeah, I think the raised island may really be the only way to do it. You know, if we could make it a little bit more contrasting would be good because I think that's one of the main things is people either don't see it or it's just for whatever reason, oh, there it is, boom, you hit it. Maybe just so it's not a high sore and doesn't become an issue, you know, take a look and see what can be done maybe a little bit differently than was done in front of Subway and Starbucks on Main Street. But that may be just a good middle ground to addressing the circulation. But otherwise, I think it's a nice-looking layout.
I agree. It's going to be a tremendous improvement. I applaud you guys for scraping the building and doing a new building there. That's great. I wish more chain types of locations and businesses would upgrade their facilities in this manner, so I applaud you for it. I apologize for making life just a little bit more difficult for you with that left-hand turn. I promise you, it was not because of our discussion about McRibs, although I was still seething about that. So yeah, I would certainly be willing to support this as long as we have with staff a physical barrier that actually forces people to turn right and keeps them from turning left as a condition, as an additional condition. Other than that, I think everything looks good on it. And with that, we are going to need a motion.
I move that the planning commission approve plan development permit, PD 2019-0006.
With the additional condition?
With the additional condition, as discussed.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, moving on to number three. Minami Park Telecom Plan Development Permit at 601 West Enoes Drive. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Carol Zizanheni and I will be presenting the Minami Park Telecom application at 601 West Enoes Drive at Minami Park. So the proposed telecommunications facility is a co-location on an existing lighting sconce right next to a softball field. So the Minami Park, for those who are unfamiliar, is just south of West Enoes Drive. It actually goes up along South Depot Street and borders with West Battles. So the site is in a public facilities zoning district with residential, oh, open space, excuse me, open space zoning district with a single-family residential to the east and right now it's a vacant agricultural fields, but there is a single-family residential to the west as well. So this is a view of the site plan with an aerial image just to provide some context. So the proposed facility is located right over here on this lighting sconce at First Base on the softball field with, excuse me, an equipment enclosure right next to the basketball, the half-basketball fields or half-basketball court and a tennis court right along here. So the design is proposed to incorporate, integrate into the existing chain link fencing with green material that matches, yes, with roof slots and the kind of vinyl windscreen around it that is commonly seen in tennis courts. So here is a view of the elevations looking northeast. As you can see, the star is where the photo was taken. Here is the softball field here and then just off to the right is the enclosure. One thing I forgot to mention on the previous slide is that the enclosure is proposed to be screened with some of the existing shrubbery that's seen around the tennis courts and the basketball courts with irrigation incorporated as well. So here is another view looking from the parking lot, looking south. There's a note here, not visible, that's the equipment enclosure. It's not visible from this vantage point, but here is the proposed antenna arrays on top of that lighting sconce there. And then another view looking northwest from that star off by the playground over here. In the background, you can see the screened equipment enclosure. There's not landscaping shown in this visual, however, that will be incorporated in real life. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission, by motion, approve plan development permit, PD 2019-0003.
Did you have a picture looking east?
So this is looking northeast. The applicant did not provide a photo, so I'm looking from Depot Street here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any disclosure by commissioners for any communication for T-Mobile? No? Okay. Then how about questions for staff from the commission? Yes, sir?
So this is a city facility, right? Minami Park is a city facility?
Correct. It's owned by the City of Santa Maria.
City of Santa Maria. Is as part of this, is there going to be a lease agreement with the applicant?
Yes, that is correct. There's a condition of approval, I believe, that discusses the process after planning commission approval that requires that the city council approve the lease disclosure agreement.
Which includes compensation and agreement for maintenance and access and everything else?
I believe that covers it. And Public Works can weigh in on this.
Do you know what the question is, David, or did you just blurt out the word "yes"?
Basically, the two of these divisions that sets up these agreements for the, for these antennas that are on public property. But yes, it's an agreement as far as compensation, maintenance, and everything that's included with the tower. So it's all inclusive.
I was just curious. It seems like we ought to be leasing the property, right, and the rights to have the facility there. I just didn't see it in here, so curious about that.
Oh, yeah, there's an agreement. We have some, an example would be Oakley Park. We have various, there's...
Thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Chairman, does the applicant have any idea what the base of the post or of the poles going to be? How wide it is or the diameter of that pole?
Sir, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jesse Gelholm. I work for Synergy Development Services at 867 East Front Street in Ventura, here today representing T-Mobile. And I want to first thank staff and thank the commission for hearing this project to answer the question about the diameter of the base of the pole. I do not have that exact information. We will bid the project out to a pole vendor, likely Musco, in coordination with the city to ensure that the lighting is reinstalled in a manner which matches the current lighting design. But when we obtain that pole design, we will then have the exact dimensions of the, excuse me, the base of the pole. It'll be dependent on the soils and some other parameters, so cannot tell you that right now.
It will be substantially larger than the light posts there now, though, right?
Yes, it'll be, there are several facilities at city parks and it should be substantially similar to the other ones. I don't have the specs on the other ones. If I did, I'd cite them. But it is a wider base than the existing light standard, yes.
And then, do you happen to know what the actual footprint is of the antenna array? You guys have seven feet on the planned view of the antenna array, and I was just trying to scale it. Is it more like 11 by 11 up there?
Like the length times width of the antennas?
The footprint on sheet A3?
Um...
Detail one.
Pulling off that seven feet, I think 11 is a pretty accurate estimate. Yes. I don't have that exact dimension, but to scale that does look like a correct estimate.
And then it's nine foot high, right? So it's 11 by 11 by nine feet high.
The antennas are a little over eight feet and they'll have some jumpers coming out the bottom, so again, nine feet is an accurate estimate of the antenna part in height.
And then that's about 20 feet over the top of the existing light posts? Or are you lowering that light, I'm sorry, the top of the lights? Are you lowering those lights?
No. The lights will be reinstalled again to match the current lighting configuration and coordination with Musco to make sure that they work properly in coordination with the adjacent lights. And I believe it's a 50-foot structure being extended to 70 feet.
Okay. Because I was looking at your south elevation, I see that one of the lights is actually on a slight slope, so it looks like they're different elevations. So it looks like this one's actually, you're lowering the lights, but nevermind, I'm sorry, I have all the information I need.
Commissioner Hernandez, anything for staff at this time?
No.
The, thank you, sir. We'll be with you in just a second. For staff, is that a pre-existing set of lights at this stage?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's just, so what's being discussed is basically putting a 20-foot topper on it?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And with what we're discussing, with the, trying to figure out what we're going to do with Quist Apache across the way there to the west, do you know whether adding that bring this up to 70 feet would make it visible from that side or trees covering it or what? I mean, has it become an eyesore to potential residential that is going to be built there at some point?
Based on the existing trees, I would imagine it would be visible, yes.
Okay.
In the existing, it says, it's got a label that says "not visible" in one of the...
That's a little shack below.
So I believe that that label was showing the, I can go just one more slide over, is that not visible label there is referring to the equipment enclosure behind the tennis courts and it's kind of obscured by shrubbery. So that's what that label means.
No.
No? Okay. All right, I see we do not, Catherine, we don't have any communication. Okay. So why don't we go ahead and if you can come up, Jesse, and tell us a little about the project and then answer some questions.
Okay. Well, again, thank you to staff and to Carol for the presentation. I think it captures the gist of the project. We do attempt to propose the best design and the best location on every project that we have. We start with an attempt to co-locate on existing structure, move on to co-locate on a rooftop, move on to a cohabitation, which I think this would qualify as, and then move on to lastly, a new support structure. So we've done that diligence. I can talk about the history of the project and how we ended up at this particular location and this particular design, if the commission would like, I can start talking about that.
I would.
Okay. Well, their project was initiated to provide coverage to an area which is currently lacking coverage as well as offload an existing site at the government center. Are you guys familiar with that and where it is? I believe it is, let me get my notes, Miller and Betaravia, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. And then we have, so that's the site to the south, which is highly congested and needed some offload help to the, and then we have the Santa Maria into the north, and we needed coverage. Ideally, it would have been kind of along Broadway. That was where the initial, the project initiated and we ended up at the park and I'll get to how we got there. We did attempt to co-locate on a monopine, which is, I have the .34 miles to the northwest of the government center, and it was just too close to that existing site to propose to fill in the coverage gap. So that was the exhaustion of the ability to try to co-locate on existing facility. We did try to incorporate a rooftop facility along Broadway, but there was, or there is quite a low height limit and there wasn't a, I think the height limit in itself negated the ability for a rooftop co-location along Broadway as well as, you know, we drove up and down it dozens of times trying to find a building which architecturally could accommodate a facility with some type of natural aesthetic. The alternative solution we came up was at the city-owned park, which seems to be a, there seems to be several sites in the city, and the city supported such design. So that was where we came up. We worked with staff throughout the beginning of the project to try to have a conversation on where we should go and how we should build it, rather than just show up and say, here's what we have and we want to give it to us. And again, this is the design we came up with and the location we came up with, again, utilizing the existing structure of the light standards, you know, and there are trees in the area. It's not completely flat, give some context, and hopefully will mitigate the visual effect rather than going in a location which didn't have either light standards or trees in the area. We didn't pay too much, we didn't focus on the visual aesthetics from the agriculture lot to the east, which we would have to address future development, but we did not. I know as you drive up the road, it's fairly blocked by trees, especially when you're driving through the trees that line the street, and that would be on South Depot.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions?
Yeah, a question. On the height of it, how do you go by determining the height of the antenna?
Height of antenna? Contentious question, and it's always a two-edged sword, especially when you have trees. From a visual standpoint, if you're below adjacent tree line, it would be great. You wouldn't see it. From a propagation standpoint, if you're below adjacent trees, the site wouldn't work. It would shoot into them. So it's a, it is something that we have to navigate. It's, the higher, the better, I think, for T-Mobile propagation. If they were at 95 feet, they would get the optimum propagation for the facility. As it goes lower, you get less area coverage. So this was the lowest they could go to adequately offload and meet the government center is the primary answer to your question. They want 95, and at that point of the discussion with T-Mobile, I pretend I'm Planning Commission and try to get them as low as possible, and that's how this height was established.
Okay. So 95, 90, 95 is ideal. So is 70 the lower end, or is that a happy medium, or?
That's the lower end for the site to adequately offload the government center site.
And there was some consideration for visual mitigation based on the height. Like you said, you sort of put yourself in Planning Commission shoes to think about, I don't want to be too high either for visual impact. So there was a balance there in the design aesthetically and functionally.
Yeah, it took some significant arm wrestling, you know, on the front and on my end to get the client, the RF engineers, to accept the lower height. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gelholm, over the past several years, this Commission has tried to, has had a desire to move away from towers and move to ODAS systems or something along that line. Other communities have them. Santa Barbara has them, Montecito, San Luis Obispo. They're moving towards those directions. Did you look at that, at that to deal with your capacity issues rather than going this, or did you only go with the idea of a tower?
I did look at it at about 10:00 AM this morning, thanks to a call from Carol to let me know that that was a question that may come up in the Commission hearing. And I did watch another item you guys had on September 4th to try to get an idea of the question, so.
Stick around, you'll see how that comes.
The answer is, did I, did we personal, this project was initiated as a macro site. It was not discussed as a small cell or an ODAS project. Again, since this morning, I've been scrambling to try to understand T-Mobile's stance on that and why that didn't happen, and try to do my best to answer that question. I'm going to grab some notes, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
See how well I get through this. In talking with the team of RF engineers, including the lead for the market, the short answer for them was that a non-macro site would not work for them. This is a coverage site. It's not a infill capacity location for which they are deploying a minimal amount of DAS sites and whatnot, the Rose Bowl or Universal Studios are in unique circumstances. I do believe Montecito has one as well. But that was their initial response. And I said, why? Why, how can I explain to them other than it doesn't work? And there is a variety of reasons. One is that they need full spectrum to provide the coverage to accommodate old technologies on old handsets and new technologies, and the small cells or ODAS only allow a mid-band technology, which doesn't support the network other than an infill capacity offload. So again, this being a coverage site, not strictly in a very defined location with a small burst of traffic, the utilization wouldn't apply here. I do, I have been asked this question quite often when I go to apply for macro sites as referring to them, and often, I've done a lot of T-Mobile work over the past years, and I'm told AT&amp;T and Verizon's doing this. Why can't you guys? T-Mobile has not deployed many DAS or small cell projects in their layout. Each carrier has kind of specific needs, and that hasn't been part of T-Mobile's build-out. We do, we have gone and met with cities to kind of just, before we're asking for something, kind of talk about a five-year plan that T-Mobile has, and I've had the opportunity to sit in on some of those, because that's often a back-and-forth question, just to try to speak with the city when you're not directly asking for them to express what your five-year plan is and your network needs are and understand city needs. And that has been a common theme, why can't you do what other carriers are doing? And the responses are, our needs are different, and we don't, we're not deploying our network the same way. I do know that the...
Will you be in the future?
I don't think so. I don't, I mean, the future, who knows? It's a pretty changing industry, but I know that there are no proposed, let me get my notes again for the response for that in a moment, please. Yeah, there's no new ODAS or small cells planned in the Santa Barbara, Montecito area. I was kind of focusing on that because I'd heard your question, and I thought it was a valid question from your perspective. It's a better technology, and I think that's arguable. It's not the same technology. It doesn't provide the same service, and, but I understand the question. If they get it, if it's just a cost thing, then why don't we get it too? And they don't have any deployed right now. And again, this was for the Santa Barbara area. I was focusing on asking there, and they did reiterate that they're really only deploying them on more venue locations, such as, you know, Universal Studios, stadiums and whatnot.
So it is a technology that you are capable of implementing? It's just a choice as to whether or not you want to implement it?
I don't know that.
I mean, you said that there are venues that you did apply those to, so if you just scale it?
For capacity offload, it doesn't work for coverage. Again, you need all your spectrums, you need to service all the different devices. Theirs would, they would have coverage on that specific area, but the big pole is for that mid-band data, so they can supplement that with these...
Is there, is there another technology that is less of an eyesore that would cover that sort of, that sort of technology?
No, there is not. In fact, I wish antennas were just getting smaller and they could go lower, and it seems to be going in the other direction. In this particular case, the city will have a unique opportunity to, to have significant influence on design upgrades because they are the landlord outside of jurisdictional requirements. But your question was, is there a less obtrusive technology? And I believe the answer at this point, again, for T-Mobile's network, and I'm not sure if like the spectrum that people have really influences on how they can deploy from a different technologies. I can't speak for, you know, other carriers. I only know the, and I'm not an expert in the field, but I did try to ask these questions that for T-Mobile's network development currently, no.
Further questions of the applicant? No? Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
With no further questions, we will bring, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to us for comments. Commissioner Hernandez?
For me, whether it's 90 feet or 70 feet, it doesn't really make a difference because I cannot make a finding that it's not going to have an adverse effect on the adjacent property. The visual impact because of the development on the adjacent parcel with the Quist Apache coming, we're still kind of looking at how that's going to be developed. I think this just doesn't meet for this Commissioner that, to make that finding.
Thank you. Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, I do agree with Commissioner Hernandez. There are really not a lot of sort of assessment, evaluation, you know, in terms of aesthetics. I mean, we've got some renderings and some pictures of what it'll look like, but we don't have a good impact analysis, a real visual impact analysis to the existing homes, much less the future condition of the west. And, you know, that's just a really pretty imposing height, I guess, you know? 90 feet, wow. I realize this is 70, but that's pretty tall. And I think it's, you know, Commissioner Lopez's question about how big, that's really, how big is this thing going to be at the base? I mean, you know, transmission line size? I mean, that's, I imagine the, it's got to be pretty big. I'm exaggerating maybe, but, you know, certainly four to five feet in diameter. You're saying no, but we don't have an answer on that question. So I think there's, you know, it's kind of nice in a way that it blends in with the other lights to some degree. It's sort of there already, there's a light pole, but just the fact that it's much taller and you got this, the big antenna on top, you know, there's a lot to be, a lot left to be desired, I guess. So I'm not 100% necessarily convinced that it's the best way to go.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. I think that it's interesting that you said that you feel like the size of the antennas is going the other direction, which I was thinking the same thing, looking at this. I mean, nine feet tall, 10 foot by 10 foot in footprint, it's massive. I mean, it's, I know it's an array, I know it's more airspace up there, or it's not a solid item, but it's massive, 70 feet tall. And then looking at it in the open space district, do we have any other antennas in our parks that are as tall?
I'm not sure about height, but there are a few camouflaged facilities that have gone through this Commission. I'm not sure about this Commission, but they've gone through and been approved.
I think the last one was four or five years ago, yeah.
Four years ago.
That is, it's a large, large antenna. And I think, I don't know much about the technology that you're speaking of, but I would imagine that there's equipment out there that would probably be able to do the same thing. So I'm a little hesitant, like Commissioner Blanco and Commissioner Hernandez, to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with the other Commissioners. I am, and have been for many years, concerned about the look of these antennas and adding them to our skyline. I want to, you know, my preference is to move away from that to other technologies and not to be adding these enormous antennas. In this case, we have a park, and it worries me that we're going to increase and put, you know, a large, a fairly large topper in one of our parks. So it's going to make the park just a little bit less pleasant. And then, of course, we are working on the Quist Apache plan, and it could very well have a substantial amount of residential that would also then be facing that and seeing that. With that in mind and with kind of the stated sense from the Commission, if we were in a mood or desire to deny, do you wish us to deny that or put that forth this evening? Or do you want us to continue this so you have an opportunity to put together a resolution for denial? So then we have a choice on an upcoming meeting as to that.
You can direct staff to come back with a resolution for denial. We will need findings and a resolution in order for the Commission to do that, though.
Okay.
So we can come back with that.
Work on that. Okay.
Can I ask you one last question?
Go ahead.
I greatly appreciate it. Just so, it's a great opportunity to understand what you guys want for the city. If the facility was changed to a faux tree, would that influence, or would you guys support that more than the design is depicted?
I'll answer it for myself. I would kill myself if there was a faux tree there. So, no. I really, they never quite look like trees, and it looks funky and that sort of thing, so.
Secondly, if there was a, I would like to state that there is a, the exact design to a park to the north, and I apologize, I didn't write the park name. Is it Bentley? No.
Staff? Is a park, is there Bentley Park? Anyway, go ahead.
This exact design exists at a city park.
I don't know when that was put in, but in the last few years, there's been a shift in the mood and the desire for minimizing or eliminating towers.
Okay. And then something that I could, and again, based on the continuation thought, if I could go back to T-Mobile engineering, and this is 70 feet, if it was 65, does that change anything? Or is it, would lowering the height sway the Commission to approve it if it was agreed to by the applicant? I couldn't agree to it now, but...
I'm not sure about the others, but for me, five feet isn't going to make much of a difference.
Even if it was 10 feet shorter?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the point is that we're trying to move away from this technology and obtain improved technology. Within the last four years, the Commission has moved in a different direction, and we want to improve. And while it may be costly, the companies were asking that we get improved technology. Other communities have it, and Santa Maria should be good enough for these companies to come in and bring the ODAS technology to our city. And at what point can the city... to our city. And at what point can the city, you know, say, well, you know, you have one just like this over here, and we're saying, well, yes, but now we want improved technology? It's just like every industry, we're just requesting that you step up and improve the technology. And I think the height doesn't really make a difference because aesthetically, the height is still going to be an impact, a visual impact on the adjacent property. And so you would get away from that visual impact with the alternative technology.
I appreciate that.
I would like to give some additional information as well, because we've done some additional research. Using the finding of you want to change the technology to ODAS is not, is not going to work legally. You have grounds for visual impacts and to modify the design for visual, but in FCC regulations and counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, but we can't say no because we want you to do ODAS instead because that is a different type of technology.
Correct. And I read that in the, in the file. It was very clear. That is just an example for the applicant. I cannot make a finding that this does not have visual impact on the adjacent property.
And in essence, if the, if, if the reason we are denying or discussing denial of this one is in essence the same as we are discussing, we will be discussing denial of, of the Verizon one, then if you want to use as a template for a denial, the one that you've given us to look at for Verizon, then frankly, the, the reasons that you gave in that apply to this as well. So it's, it doesn't necessarily have to be about the technology, it can be about the aesthetics, it can be about...
I just wanted to make you aware that aesthetics is a finding.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
But no matter the aesthetics, if it's a macro full-site design, it will be denied subject to the request to go on an alternative technology such as ODAS.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of that.
I'm just trying to clarify, if T-Mobile gets denied, they're going to ask, what can we do?
Right.
And the, what I heard was a macro full-site design with eight-foot antennas up in the air at 60, 70 feet is going to get denied. The commission wants alternative technologies such as ODAS. I'm not going to get approved with any...
I think it's going to be difficult to get approved with, with such a large thing. So yeah, the, the shift over, and once again, the impact on adjacent properties.
What type of impact?
Visual, the aesthetic. I mean, that's an impact. And frankly, it's an impact in our parks as well. But so that, I think that's just something, what we're looking for is an alternative that has less of a, a footprint, less of a, a visual, is less visually negative in our mind. Thank you.
I do appreciate letting me come back up. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will, it was already brought back to us, and we need a motion of some kind.
Are we going to continue it?
We need to, if we're going to continue it to have the choice of a thing, then we, we need to let them know to, to do that.
I move, I move that we continue this item until the next public hearing. Ryan, do you have a date?
November 20th.
I move that we continue this item to November 20th, 2019.
In order to allow staff to?
In order to allow staff to draft a denial.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Thank you.
Will it be open next time?
Pardon?
Is it a public hearing on the next? I guess now staff.
Yeah. And yeah, it'll be another public hearing just like this one, but in a different day.
Just to come get denied based on the resolution for it or not?
Well, we don't know until it's presented.
Thank you.
Item number four, Verizon conditional use permit at 516 South Oakley Avenue. We hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a continued item. This is a Verizon telecom tower at 516 South Oakley Avenue. So just to provide a little background on the project, although we've discussed it in the previous item, on the September 4th hearing, staff presented a project with recommendation for approval with design modifications to the original project that was presented by the applicant, for a 40-foot tall monopole with an uncamouflaged design, as the uncamouflaged design is less intrusive and blends better in with the neighborhood. The commissioners raised concerns about visual impacts of the proposed tower on neighboring residences, and were concerned about why the alternative distributed technologies were not pursued. The commission moved to continue the item to October 2nd, to the October 2nd hearing, asking the applicant to look into alternatives to the macro tower. The item was continued again to date uncertain, to provide the applicant some extra time to make the, the hearing. So the present hearing is, the applicant has worked with their engineer and with staff to address the commission's concern. Staff would like to correct the record. In the staff report, staff mentioned that the reason that Verizon was not pursuing a smaller distributed system was because of cost. That is incorrect. Just a statement from the applicant. While cells are an option, well, small cells are an option, they have a couple of big drawbacks. They are less expensive for Verizon to build and maintain, but they are less reliable than a macro cell site. Macro cell offers carriers, including Verizon, the space to, excuse me, space to add battery backup and a generator in case, in cases where it makes sense or for a generator plug. This allows the macros to stay up during disasters or during planned public electricity outages, such as we've seen in Northern California, where carriers lose all cell, small cells and capacities taken out, taken out of the network when it's needed most. As most people's home Wi-Fi is taken down, they rely on their phones more increasingly to check news updates and updates on disasters if there's a fire. This year, Verizon has learned that traffic surges during those outages, as I just mentioned. When Verizon has areas where such tower is not possible, such as residential areas, then they are forced to utilize the small cells. In this case, Verizon felt that the macro site was the best option from a technical perspective and that it was the least obtrusive option. So I'm just going to go, run through the, the previous slides really quickly. This is, the site is located...
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
You're saying that the macro sites or the, or these smaller ones are not able to have battery backup and these other things. Now, there was discussion about basically putting a box at the base of each one of these that would provide power backup to, to them. Is, is, is that what we're talking about, that those boxes at the, at the base? Or are we talking about it if they didn't include those boxes at the base?
So I was referring to the, to the big tower. They can provide generators. I would have to defer to the applicant. I'm not familiar with that technology or how that would be utilized.
We can, we can talk about it down the road then. Okay.
So this is in a commercial manufacturing zone. There's residences to the north and the, the switching yard for PG&E up in the northeast with large power poles off on South Railroad Street. And this is, or just as a refresher for the commission, this is the most favored design. This is the 40-foot uncamouflaged monopole. Another view, and one more looking from Railroad Avenue. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. The planning commission may take two options. One, by motion, approve the project with the 40-foot tall monopole design, finding that the monopole does not create a significant visual impact at this location, or by resolution, deny the application, finding that the monopole does create a significant visual impact based on the following facts. The monopole will be in clear view from the surrounding properties and from South Railroad Avenue. The monopole is within 100 feet of a 44-unit apartment complex. Other than existing adjacent PG&E power lines and towers, there are no other buildings or structures or trees of comparable height onsite or in surrounding areas. And the discussed ODAS alternatives were not pursued.
Thank you very much, Carol. Before we get any questions for staff, any disclosing by commissioners of communication with Verizon, with the applicant? No?
No.
Questions by the commission for staff? No?
No.
Okay. Then let's go ahead and open this meeting up to the public, and let's hear from the applicant. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
If you could state a name and address.
Yes, Tricia Knight, 123 Sea Cliff Drive, Pismo Beach, here representing Verizon from our last meeting. So wanted to touch base on a couple of things. You have other design options in your packet. So when we were last here, we had looked at each of them. One of them is a water tank design, so where all the antennas are completely inside. We're at substantially less height than the previous project you looked at, and we also started at 50 feet and came down to 40 feet. And then you also have a monopole option, and that, which is not fully screened, which I know I can already tell that you're loving that option. And then number three was also, this is somewhat of a storage yard in, in a commercial industrial looking area. And so we had looked at also doing a fully screened, sort of a tower element. It would almost look like maybe something that you would find as signage almost, in a way, some of the tower elements that you currently have in, in the commercial properties in, in the city. So therefore mitigating the fully visible antennas. Last time we were here, in the photosims that you looked at, you see all those other vertical elements already there of the PG&E yard. And so your determination at that time was that the monopole seemed to be the least intrusive option because there was already vertical elements at that time. So just reminding of that. Second, I did bring my RF engineer here with me. Jesse from with T-Mobile did a, did a pretty good job of analyzing the difference between the macro and the small cell. I'll let him speak to the actual numbers, but when we did have the rolling blackouts here just in the last several weeks in the northern area, all those small cells went down. Emergency services had to rely on the ones that had the backup generator, and they were down for days. And so where there is a true coverage gap, which we have proven in this case with the exhibits on their inner packet that you saw last time, it really is essential that Verizon's business model choose to fill those gaps and supplement them along time with the IDAS, as you know that Verizon does that. But at this time, this particular area does have a significant hole. And so the backup generator and the backup batteries that are proposed at this facility are really going to aid in ensuring that emergency services can do what they need to do when the time comes or if the time comes. And so if you have specific questions more about any of the technology or further information, Dwayne Bonham with Verizon is here to answer those questions. Or any other questions about the project in general, I'm here to answer.
Thank you very much, Ms. Knight. Questions for Ms. Knight?
No.
Um, can you, go ahead. Can you, can you tell me, it, you, you said in the pre, in our, in, in previous hearings, and then you, you restated now that, that the ODAS systems are, that technology can be used here in place of these macro systems, but you've chosen not to. And I do understand that there's a concept that if there's a rolling blackout, that those might go down. But if, if our push is to basically try to eliminate or, or minimize the amount of skyline, you know, view of these things, then it seems to me you do have an option. And that option is ODAS systems that, that will, that will fill the, the holes that you have.
I can't believe he hasn't raised his hand yet.
Oh, he's there.
He's dying to talk right now. I'm going to give a real quick answer, though. The answer is the network takes both. There's no way that you could remove these facilities that we're talking about and light up small cells and be completely satisfied. It takes both types of facilities to get a good, strong network. And I'm going to let him speak because he came here tonight, so.
Sir, welcome back.
Thank you. Dwayne Bonham, 27, 85, Mitchell Drive, Walnut Creek, California. First off, small cells versus macro cells. Small cells are not a superior technology. They are actually an inferior technology. They don't allow us to add, they're, they're very technology limiting. Many of the technological things that come about cannot be put in with small cells. So they handcuff us, handcuff us in some of the areas such as Montecito where we've rolled it out. There's a lot of technological advances that have came out in recent years that we can't roll out. Now, there are very effective solution for filling in between macro sites, as the previous gentleman stated. They're better for mid-band. They're better for a capacity fill-in or mid-band coverage. Mid-band doesn't cover out as far as our low band signals, so you need more cells. You need cells in between the cell sites. That's where small cells come into play. They're very effective for that. They are cheaper for us to roll out. If they were a better option, we would be rolling them out everywhere. They're, they're not a better option. The, as we mentioned, the macro sites provide a level of reliability that we're currently reassessing because of the fact that the public, the PSPS outages that we just had, we lost power to 111 cell sites in Northern California. Of those eight actually went down on the Verizon network. One, one burned. We lost 90% of the small cells that were within those areas. The few that we, that remained, it's over 90% actually, the few that remained were some rooftops where we had batteries, where we could keep them up for a while. That has Verizon reassessing how we're deploying our networks. When we get to the 5G, we're definitely, it's going to be more of a small cell type thing, although we're going to still deploy 5G into the macro sites. But there's a lot of concern within Verizon that we don't have the reliability in a small cell-based network that we've historically given with our macro-based networks.
But ultimately, the 5G is going to be pushed, can be pushed out through small cell, and that's the direction everybody's going, isn't it?
Yeah. And it depends on which frequency you're going. There, there's different frequencies that you can roll 5G over from the frequencies now to low-band frequencies. And that's probably the first thing we'll see here on the Central Coast is, is a low-band 5G solution. And then in very dense areas, it will be small cell-based, very dense designs. And I had mentioned that we have done a design for Santa Maria for this with small cells. We are not rolling those small cell designs out anywhere within the Central Coast at this time. We've done it for all the major cities in the Central Coast.
The, the power outages, you know, when we talked about ODAS a couple, three or four years ago, there was discussion that you would end up having the box at the top of the, the top of the pole, and then you would end up having a, a backup power facility or a small, a small box in five or six feet by, I don't know, four feet high or some goofy thing, at the base of the, somewhere close to or at the base of those boxes.
Yeah, it's, it's about a six-foot tall box. It's a fairly large box, and that provides about two hours of battery backup.
Okay.
So.
So there is a, there is a backup designed there.
It's very limited. It didn't work during the, the outages that we had, where we went on for days.
Right.
It does, it does give what it does do, and in areas that are fire-prone, if I were rolling out small cells, or areas that cover hospitals, emergency egress areas, I do want the battery backup in those areas because of the fact it, it gives a little bit of time in an emergency before that capacity goes offline. Because generally, we see a huge spike in usage at the time of an earthquake, at the beginning of a fire. We see a, while the, all the emergency warnings... We see a, while all the emergency warnings are going out, we see a big surge in usage.
Right.
So that two hours of battery backup can be helpful there. It's still going to go down. They don't have generators for them, so you have two hours before those assets go offline.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions? No?
No.
Thank you very much. I know it's a long trip. You've taken it several times over the, over the years, I know. Nothing from the public, so we will bring it back to the commission. Comments from the commissioners?
I looked at the height and it really did not make a difference in terms of the finding, the aesthetics of it is just too large, the location of it. And based on all the factors that I looked at, I, as a commissioner, I could not get past the fact that it does have a visual impact and I cannot make a finding that it doesn't have a significant visual impact on adjacent property. And for that reason, I'm not in agreement with the project.
Commissioner Lopez?
Well, I certainly think it may have a little bit less visual impact than, than the prior applicant's project. And I think certainly going down to 40 feet helps quite a bit. The one thing I couldn't assess is really the visual from the residential side. I mean, it was helpful to see all these renderings of before and after from the street side and on the industrial side, but for the residents themselves on that in the north side, I don't know, maybe I didn't see it, but I didn't see any rendering related to visual impacts from that side unless I missed it, but I didn't see that.
It's referenced as viewpoint three. In each rendering, you have three different designs before you. You have a monopole, you have a screen tower, and then you have also a phone water tank. And in view three, you can see the apartment buildings and one of the residences.
I'm not this one.
Let's see, I'm trying to see if these pages are numbered and the stuff are...
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
I get it.
So that view, that view three looks like it's from the street to the west.
It is, but you can see the residences in the foreground.
Right, but so there's no view from, from the north looking towards the tower, from the residence on the north side?
No, just the residence on this side. You can barely see the tower peeking out over the top there.
Right. Okay, so, so I, I think we're, for me anyways, this feels a little bit more palatable than, than a 70-foot high tower. So I really appreciate the effort to try to look at this a little closer. I'm just not familiar enough with small cells and ODAS. I'm no expert, so I can't comment on, on really the opportunity to do that here. And I understand providing service and emergency and serviceability and customers, so that's, you know, that's, that's a little bit understandable. So I'm, I'm a little closer to liking this or, you know, approving this than, than on the other, the other one. But yeah, I just frankly, it's, I like it better from last time. I think that the height is definitely, would lead me towards the direction of maybe approving, but I'd like to hear, you know, if there are any other questions or any other comments related to it. So, but yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this, this one's a little more interesting. Like Commissioner Blanco said, it's, it's not quite a neighborhood, but it's a kind of a hodgepodge of different zoning areas because there is residential. This is actually commercial manufacturing. One question I had was there's an easement that kind of goes at a bunch of different, in one direction obviously, but it's, it's kind of all over the property. And I imagine that would be an easement where you would not be able to build over at some point. If you, say this was rezoned to residential. You're locked in outside of that footprint of that easement. I'm looking at sheet C1 of the site survey.
David, I don't know if you, it looks like an access easement across the site. And if that's the case, it would run with the land. So it does encumber the site if it is an easement on the property.
So I, you know, over the, I've been on the planning commission for a couple of different times and I always thought it was, it was more beneficial to the city to kind of get these hodgepodge areas and kind of make them more uniform, whether it's changing the zoning to a less impactful use. In this case, you have a CM district next to the residential there to the west and it looks like a residential here to the, to the east, these two small lots. Placing this 40-foot un, what is it, this monopole with no, it's just the antennas, right? Kind of similar to the last, the last one. I'm going to have to agree. I think at some point, we're going to get development going in those, in those areas and the impact to those areas will be, I think, apparent. And I don't know if I could support this, this project either. I know it's a lot shorter than the 70-foot top of antenna of the last project, but where, if we're in a zone, what is the maximum height in that zone?
So the, the maximum height is 40 feet in the CM zone. And I just would like to add, if I may, that the, there are other options, including an architectural-type feature that might fit in better with, if that's what the direction the commission's going for with redevelopment or changing zoning.
Yeah, I did, I did look at the water tower and I know there's one up on, what is it? Behind the old auto wrecking place over there by, by those new apartments being built on Depot, just to the west of there. There's a, there's a water tank and there's the car washes, there's the water tanks. I'm not a fan of those, but I just, I think that the overall height is, and the top-heavy nature of these types of antennas are, are going to impact the neighborhood. So I don't know if I could support this either. I don't know. Well, we'll see.
I agree with Commissioner Hernandez. I can't support this for, for the reasons of aesthetics, but I, and part of that is that, you know, there's an apartment, there are adjacent residential, including an apartment structure that's right there just to the north. And, you know, I've said this before and, you know, it, this type of tower may have seemed palatable there because there, there are other structures of similar nature in and around that area. I kind of look at it a different way and that's that, that the residents that live there, I mean, I'm going to be perfectly frank, already don't live in the nicest part of, of Santa Maria. And I just, it's not consumable to me to vote to make their life a little less nice just because they live in a, in a little bit less economically upscale area. I would, I would rather, I would, in this particular case, I would rather swap the, the smaller cell items that may have a little bit of, maybe a little less robust than the macro. I would rather do that for the visual element of not, of not having a larger tower. So from that standpoint, I cannot support this, this project. With that, we're going to need a motion or a resolution.
I move that we deny project Verizon conditional use permit, 516 South Oakley Avenue, conditional use permit, U 2019-0003.
Resolution 2775.
Resolution 2775.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Can I get a roll call, Kathleen?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Motion or resolution carries. Thank you.
Small cells, but they keep on height.
What's that?
Small cells are taller than these?
No, I'm sorry. I meant the, the, well, the ODAS. Anyway, the...
Wait, they go on, they go on JPA poles, okay?
Right.
So when you start going JPA pole, G95, you have to be six foot, the bottom of the antennas will be six foot above the power lines, which are generally at about 45 feet. Most of the small cells we're building are 55 feet tall. Okay?
So because the planning commission...
And they have to be in the residentially zoned areas.
The planning commission made a decision on this. There is an appeal period, so we can...
This is just for educate, just to educate you guys, because it's, you guys are going in a, I'd love to come and sit down and educate, help and explain to you guys some of the things...
Use the word educate, that's what I'm saying. I understand.
It's okay. I just, there seems to be a lot of expectations here on what small cells are, their kind of, or...
You know, our, our understanding and our expectation is that they're, they're smaller, that they are less intrusive than, than the large towers. We do understand, we've seen pictures of them, small boxes. I see them when I drive in San Luis. I mean, they are, they are just not as visually, you know...
I have not been to a small cell hearing yet where we did not have a resident show up.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, I think the last one I did, we had about 60 residents show up. Because they, these small cells have to be within two-tenths of a mile of where your users are. So they're built in the residentially zoned areas, which means you're noticing a lot of residents for each one of these, which then they tend to band together. So I'm just warning you, when you, if you get small cells, you're going to have large groups of irate citizens in here.
Well, hopefully there won't be irate. Thank you very much.
All right. You get it. Have a good night.
We go ahead. Five oral reports from planning commissioners and staff. Ryan?
I would like to update the commission on last night's city council meeting. The city council accepted the contract for the general plan update. And we had gone through a RFP process. It's spent most of the year working on that and a team selected a preferred consultant and vetted before council last night. And it was approved by the council, so we're very excited about moving forward with that, that big effort. So that was a big success for the city.
What's the next step in that? I mean, how does that, how does it progress, at least in the next six months?
There's a very formal kickoff process with formalizing a project management schedule with the team and the consultant and kicking that off with different groups that we form, advisory groups, committees. And so there's several things that are going to happen over the course of the next few months.
Where are they out of?
It's Rainy and Associates and you're familiar with them. They worked on the streetscape plan and they're out of Southern California. It's a large team. They have subs that are working with them that are, they have several local consultants, our circulation element team, GHD, their traffic consulting firm. They have local folks that have worked with the city that are with them. Lisa Weiss Consulting, they're helping with economic analysis. And the housing element, they're a firm out of San Luis Obispo. So it's a large team working on the project.
Wow, that's wonderful.
We're very excited about that. I also want to update you, so on our future schedule, we're looking toward our next meet. We don't have study session tomorrow, but November 20th, we have a continuing item from tonight that we're going to bring back and we have another item scheduled for November 20th. And then December 18th, we have an item scheduled on that, on that hearing. So that's our outlook.
Any comments from commissioners? No? Anything else from staff? We're done.